Good evening. We call to order the October 5th, 2020, meeting of the Revere City Council. Will all rise and salute the flag?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic which it stands.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Thank, here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Absent, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, who is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 28th, 2020.
Done.
Sorted.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by the Revere City Council that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Pastor Nick Grenesis of the First Congregational Church on the occasion of his retirement after 46 years of service to the city of Revere.
Councilor Sorino? I'm sorry, Council Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, well, what do you say about a person that has dedicated 46 years of their life to serving others, especially the residents of Revere as well as surrounding communities? I want to say thank you to Pastor Nick for the selflessness in putting everyone first, for serving the people less fortunate, especially the residents in our community. I want to wish you a long and healthy retirement and wish you nothing but the best. I'm sure the First Congregational Church will miss you because I know for certain that the city of Revere is going to miss you. And on behalf of the City Council, we want to present to you this commendation that reads as follows, if I may, Mr. President and my fellow colleagues. Revere City Council's Certificate of Commendation in recognition of the occasion of his retirement from the First Congregational Church after 46 years of dedicated public and spiritual service to the residents of the city of Revere. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Pastor Nick Grenesis for 37 years. Pastor Nick has managed the Revere Food Pantry and has helped thousands of needy families within the community. Pastor Nick also stated, started the Caring Hearts Ministry, which helps homeless families and individuals with their needs. The city of Revere holds comfort that these programs will continue and that his generosity and compassion will carry on and may Pastor Nick have a blessed and fulfilling retirement. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2020, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 2044th. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Visconti. Council McKenna wishes to speak as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pastor Grenesis, thank you so much for your long service to the city of Revere. You've helped hundreds and thousands of thousands of our residents while you were at the First Congregational Church. Now you can step back, relax, and reflect on all your accomplishments and the difference that you've made in our community. Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And there was a, the citation was sent to Pastor Nick and we congratulate him as well as the incoming pastor, Pastor Tim. And we welcome Tim, who's been in the congregation for a number of years and takes over as the pastor. Madam Clerk, before the next item, Councilor Sorino wishes to take a point of personal privilege. Council Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members of the council and to the city of Revere. I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege because as you may have recognized the last two meetings, I have been participating remotely. I have not been in the council chamber. And that is due to about 11 days ago, being with a friend of mine who contracted COVID. He was a person I consider to be in my circle of people that I've been with since the beginning of the pandemic, seeing regularly. And he only got a COVID test not because he was symptomatic, but rather because he was traveling and needed the test to go where he was going. So I was with him the day after he got his COVID test, but again, he was not symptomatic. So there was no need for concern and we were, you know, we were together as we had been throughout the pandemic. And the day after I was with him, he got his results and found out that he was COVID positive. So as a result, I am now under a 14-day quarantine at home. If you haven't seen it on Facebook, I just wanted to give an explanation to the residents of the city why I am not physically in the chamber, but I do look forward to being back in the chamber at the end of October. I did test negative. However, I am under the advice of the CDC and as a result of the Commonwealth's Contact Tracing Program, I've been advised to stay in quarantine until my two weeks is up, which will be up on Friday, Thursday night. So until Thursday night, I will be quarantined at home. But this is just a reminder too, to the residents of the city that we're still in the midst of this pandemic. And even if you're not symptomatic, you can still be a carrier of COVID-19. And we really, we must all continue to be vigilant, wear the mask, socially, stay socially distant, and get tested in Revere. I had the test done at Revere High. It was super easy. It was not one of those painful ones that go all the way up your nostril. They go right in the nostril. It was literally 20 seconds. It was painless. So as we continue to be in a red community, please stay vigilant and please get tested. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'm glad you're well. For the residents, as a public service announcement, again, Council Sorino brings up a lot of great points, but the city does, has been offering and will continue to offer free testing Monday through Saturday. And there's two sites. They do a daytime site and a nighttime site. So if you look up on revere.org, you'll see those testing sites. I know a number of councils have gotten tested just because we want to help spread awareness. I know Councilor Morbido did that and as well as I got tested last week. I want to help spread awareness. Fortunately, we both were negative, which is great, but it's super simple, super easy, and it's free. It's free of charge. So I recommend highly that you go and do it and it is non-invasive. It's really quick. On top of that, you know, there are a lot of concerns about the city being, having a high positivity rate. So if you want to help with that positivity rate, go get tested. And if you're, and the hopes is that you'll be negative, the positivity rate will drop and it potentially could help our community. So thank you, Council Sorino, and thank you to the residents of Revere. Hopefully you'll take this advice. Madam Clerk, item number four.
Calendar item number four, certificate, I'm sorry, motion presented by Council Rotundo and President Keith that a certificate of commendation be awarded to Officer Raul Gunkalvez for his actions in preventing a potential tragedy in June when he saved the life of a toddler who ran into Park Avenue.
Madam Clerk, I'll speak on this. And Officer Raul Gunkalvez declined to be in person, sorry, be on tonight. He's really, you know, like most first responders, the first answer out of them is that's my job, right? But it wasn't his job. He was driving to work and he was able to see what was going on and quickly jumped in and potentially saved a young girl or toddler. So, you know, he prevented a potential tragedy for a family. So we want to thank Officer Gunkalvez. And if you don't know him, he's an Everett police officer. So if you ever have a chance, send a message over to the Everett Police Department Chief Maisy and let them know what a wonderful man they have on staff over there. But on top of it, he also is part of the Mask Badge Association, along with officers like Joseph Intenacola, who helped serve a number of residents in Revere and Everett Thanksgiving meals. So he's not just an officer, he loves to serve the community. So we want to thank him and I'll make sure that we hand-deliver this citation to him at the Everett Police Station. So thank Officer Gunkalvez. Oh, hi, thank you.
Calendar item number five, Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Council Novoselski.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. President, today we have a subcommittee meeting on one issue regarding National Grid doing work from all the way, from what I understand, from the skating rink all the way to Winter Parkway down to the beach. It's quite an extensive job and made sure that Council McKenna was involved and she knew what was going on and she filled us in and a lot of parts on it. So I think we covered all the bases and the committee voted to recommend that the request be approved.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call on the Public Works Subcommittee?
Council Novoselski, there were three conditions that the Subcommittee report, are you reporting those out as well?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
On the petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground conduits on Railroad Street, Winthrop Avenue, Washburn Avenue, Endicott Avenue, subject to the conditions of the Public Works Subcommittee, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
But of course.
Absent?
Council Rotundo is here.
Council Rotundo is here, okay, thank you. Council Rotundo, yes. Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted, subject to the conditions of the Public Works Subcommittee. Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Council Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met. We had five items under the agenda. The first was the appointment of J. Pandella Construction. We've asked that be placed on hold. Second was the appointment of Janine Grillo Mara to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. Next was the appointment of Jalain Fawla to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. Again, we had Kathy Reinstein to the Human Rights Commission. That was voted out favorably. And finally, we had the appointment of Shamar Shay Hosini to the Human Rights Commission, and that was voted out favorably. Where they were all voted out favorably, with the exception of the first one, which is placed on hold, I'd ask this committee vote them all out at the same time and vote favorably as the recommendation from the Appointment Subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda was held over by request of the attorney for the applicant and that they'll be taken up at the next council meeting. There will be a zoning Subcommittee at 4:30 PM on, I believe it's the 24th?
26.
26?
26.
Okay, thank you. Next was the 2322. This was voted out favorably. And Madam Clerk, would you read it, please? And if you don't mind reading the conditions into the record?
Yes, Council Zambudo. The conditions are as follows, that were submitted by Site Plan Review Committee. Number one, a final site plan, elevation plan, floor plan, and landscaping plan shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee prior to the issuance of a building permit. Two, concrete sidewalks and granite curbing, including granite curb butts, and all driveway openings shall be installed along the full front inch of the property along Temple Street and Douglas Street. Three, a demolition permit shall be obtained, the existing structure to be approved by the Fire Department, Board of Health, and DPW. Four, a water service, sewer service, and stormwater management plan shall be approved by the City Engineer and DPW for the proposed structure, and all abandoned water, sewer, and drain lines within the site shall be removed and capped at the main. Number five, the plans must be reviewed and approved by the Fire Department. And seven, two trees, minimum caliber of two and a half inches, shall be planted at the back of the sidewalk within each side yard on Temple Street and Douglas Street for a total of four trees. That ends the Site Plan Review conditions.
I would ask for a roll call vote.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant for 81 Temple Street, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review.
Next item is 2323. I would again ask the city clerk to read it and read the conditions of Site Plan Review.
Chairman Zambudo, the Site Plan Review conditions were read during the zoning Subcommittee. Does the council wish to waive the reading?
No, I forgot we read them. And I would just ask, we can go, we can waive the reading then.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
No.
No, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit for 100 VFW Parkway has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend rules.
Suspension of rules, all in favor? Sorted.
Reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
All in favor of reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail? Sorted.
Number 2334 is a communication from John V. Festa, 385 Broadway, Revere, requesting that the Revere City Council accept the donation of certain parcels of land for conservation purposes on Naples Road and Naples Road Passageway. The committee voted favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk?
On the donation of certain parcels of land for conservation purposes on Naples Road and Naples Road Passageway from John V. Festa, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
That's where it looks like it's gonna, we can probably get it better at that point.
Yes.
Council Visconti voting yes. Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the land donation has been accepted.
Mr. President?
Council Rotundo?
Point to personal privilege.
State your point.
Through you to Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Do we know what square footage was donated to the city of Revere and if that is a buildable lot and?
None of this is buildable, Counselor. This is all conservation land.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number, calendar item number 14, communication from the city auditor relatives of the Transportation Network Infrastructure Fund appropriation.
Mr. Visque?
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Quiet.
Would you like to tell us about this fund?
A little close. Sure. This is the third year we've received funds from the Uber and Lyft-type services that travel through the city. We are entitled to one dime for every ride that originates here. Believe it or not, we had over 1.1 million Uber and Lyft rides originate in the city. So those dollars of 113,000 and change are available to us to support our infrastructure needs for roadways, et cetera. And it is a requirement that it's appropriated by the City Council, so I have submitted that request for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Council Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Visque. How are you today, Rick?
Doing well. How are you, Counselor?
Good. We missed smoking a cigar on the beach the other day.
I know, I know. We'll catch up before the weather gets too cold.
So with that said, the money that's used, donated by, or should I say, retained by the various rideshare corporations, is it strictly for infrastructure repair? Can it be utilized for anything else? Can it be put back into the general fund? Can it be put into a capital project fund? So I have several ideas, obviously, and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, not, you can't go into the general fund. I've, I'm sorry, I'm at home, I don't have all the information. I kind of took the verbiage and put it into the letter that I wrote, which kind of allows, tells you what the allowable expenses are. But, you know, traffic studies, I believe we're going to try to use some of this money to do a street scan of all our roads and get the conditions assessed so we can use it for capital planning. But basically, any kind of traffic improvements, anything that would help offset the wear and tear on the roads and the infrastructure we have in the city due to the increased volume of cars on the road is how I interpret it, Counselor.
I would agree, and I've got an idea, and I'll speak to you in person about that. I thank you, Mr. President, for the latitude. Rick, see you in the future. Bye-bye.
You're safe.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils? All in favor, roll call vote?
Shall the City Council transfer 113,260 dollars from the Transportation Fund to the Broadway Capital Fund? Council Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that was the roadway capital fund. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 15, communication from Rafael Feliciano requesting information with regards to job preference for Revere residents at New Commercial Developments.
Madam Clerk, is Mr. Feliciano with us tonight?
No, it does not look like it. I did send him another invitation last week. He reached out to me and said he got his dates confused and we put him on again and he is not here again.
Placed on file.
Placed on file. All in favor, Council Rotundo?
Regarding this matter in particular, I believe we used to have a Revere Residence Monitoring Committee. Richard Eddy from Local 218 used to head it up. Tony Peroni used to be involved in this as well. It was something that I helped organize and I would suspect that this is something that would be a benefit. Maybe we can set off a communication to the mayor and see where we are with that. We've got many people in the city of Revere that are out of work, need employment, and as we have construction jobs in this city as well as other jobs, this would not be a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Great point. All in favor?
Council Novoselski has his hand raised? Council Keith?
You're muted, Counselor. Not by me, though.
Maybe his own computer.
Counsel, your microphone doesn't seem to be working. Okay, Counselor. You there? All right, bye-bye. Madam Clerk, would you, can I go on to the motions, please?
Sure. So calendar item number 16, motion presented by Council Guanasso that the mayor requests National Grid to complete work on Revere Street across from La Paul Rivera School. National Grid has completed the work and now the asphalt should be replaced with concrete as required by the city of Revere. In addition, that the same be requested for Blossom Street.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, during a Subcommittee meeting, I did get some sort of an answer to this. They said to call, contact Dan Cameron, that they were pretty sure that this work would be, this is a temporary patch that they would be doing and they're coming back to do the concrete. So I will have a conversation with Dan Cameron tomorrow and hopefully we'll get this done before the inclement weather comes upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? All in favor?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Council Zambudo that the city clerk be directed to place on the agenda for the next regular meeting on October 26, 2020, a communication dated September 29, 2020, written in the form of a memo from the mayor relative to the fiscal year 2021 budget concerning the restoration of certain salaries that were reduced during the City Council budget process. Further, that the mayor be directed to justify the authority to make appropriations without approval of the City Council in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Sections 32 and 33B. The City Council is the appropriating authority, not the mayor.
Council Zambudo, before I open this up, would you, would this be okay to combine Communication Number 23, communication with the mayor, the actual memo that the mayor had sent, so we can take it all up at once?
I don't have it in front of me, but that's fine with me.
It was a communication, right? So we can certainly combine it. Okay, Madam Clerk.
The motion references this memo, yeah.
Correct. Yep, just want to make sure we're taking it all up at once. Okay, Council Zambudo?
Well, obviously, I am distraught by a memo that tells me that the mayor is about to circumvent the will of the City Council. We had a lengthy budget, sometimes contentious budget deliberation, and I don't know about you, but I know that my constituents voted for the City Council to be the legislative body for the mayor. And I'm sure there's a loophole here and the mayor has found it and we'll deal with that in the future. But I simply see, if we can do this, then we're heading in the territory of a banana republic and a dictatorship. You know, the citizens hire or elect a mayor to be the chief executive officer and they elect a city council to do the city's business, especially when it comes to appropriations of funds. Now, I'm sure there's going to be an explanation coming as to how this fits in some, what I'll call a loophole, but what it really does is circumvent the City Council, and I can't stand for that. So I'm asking for the, I'm asking for the justification and how the mayor has gotten around the law. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. If my colleague doesn't object, I'd like to just put a subsequent motion in with that as well, and ask that the city council request a written opinion from the Mass Bureau of Municipal Finance Law on the legality of certain appropriations relative to salaries made by the mayor in excess of what was approved by the city council in the fiscal year 2021 budget, without utilizing any of the provisions outlined in Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, 32, 33, A and B. And this is not political. This is strictly about checks and balances in making sure that is in play here. So I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing, and I'm not questioning this, I'm not, I assume that the administration has done that. But I'm here to represent the residents, and like my colleague said, this was a contentious budget season, and the, it has been voted against the raises. And here we are, five months later, talking about raises again. So I'd like to add that in as a subsequent motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotondo.
Thank you. When you take a look at the budget that we had, Counselor Visconti did an excellent job. And people have to take a look at what we do here as a body. We are the checks and balances. And to make it very simplified for people, the mayor is the president, and we're the congressional senate body. We're the ones that deliberated on the budget, the allocation of money, the appropriation of dollars, et cetera. And when you take a look at the budget and what we cut, it was very, very small. And I know it affected some people, some of them friends of mine. But the issue is, is how can you give an appropriation, a pay raise? And people deserved it. Make no mistake about it. Everybody deserved their pay raise because they worked hard. But when you have people being laid off, when you have people losing their house, when you have people losing their job here within the city itself, it's hard to justify that. And I'm grateful for Counselor Visconti saving me the, the time in reiterating the Mass General Law. But the issue here is beyond the law. It's about, I hate to say, a perception at this point. And that's part of this issue. We have people that don't have a job. We have people that are laid off because of COVID-19 and other reasons. So it's kind of hard to justify this. And I understand that the mayor's probably done his due diligence in this. But at the end of the day, Counselor Zambudo is 100% correct in presenting this motion. I support it. This isn't a political thing. This is, quite frankly, just the way that government works, checks and balances. And I support my colleagues, and I hope the rest of my colleagues support Counselor Visconti and Counselor Zambudo, as I do. Excuse me.
Thank you, Counselor. Also, Counselor Sorino wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the concerns raised by the previous three speakers. And I had a question. You had mentioned calendar item number 23, which I assume is the text of the memo. However, I don't have that in my packet, and it wasn't, I don't think it was emailed to us other than the memo itself. But my question is, is has the memo been published as a part of the packet online? Can the public view it? Because one of my biggest concerns, in addition to the concerns raised, was that for the sake of transparency, I would hope that the residents of the city can review the language that the mayor sent over in his explanation. And further, I do have some questions for the administration, if the mayor, I don't know if the mayor is going to be on tonight to address this communication or not. But I mean, I do have some questions about it. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Counselor Morbido?
So I am very pleased to hear all your comments tonight, because I hope you guys will support me with one of my future motions. It's going to be a lot of hard work for each and every one of us. But you might want to look up Lydia Edwards' motion on the Boston City Council. So one of my motions that I'm going to propose, and with the feedback I heard from each and every one of you who spoke, I don't see why you would be against it. But I'm looking for the city council to have participatory inclusion in the budget, and I'm looking to pass that motion. It will be a lot of work for all of us, but we'll have a say for how the money is distributed. And it will be a lot of work, but I think it will be good, because we won't have to go through the back and forth.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotondo.
Through you to Counselor Morbido, are we talking about shared governance in this process, in which we have various people within the constituency assist in the budgetary process?
We are talking about the city council working with the mayor and creating the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
As a point, as a point of information, I don't have a problem with the Counselor's proposed motion at a later date. I think it's irrelevant to my motion tonight. I certainly will look at what you're proposing. I haven't seen Counselor Edwards' proposal. However, I have to say that most times, her ideas and mine do not mesh. However, I was, anything you propose, I will certainly look into, and if I can support it, I will. However, this is just a flat out, you know, I said during the budget process, that at the time, it was morally repugnant to put up increases during a pandemic when we laid off people. And I don't want to keep repeating myself. And when people were asked to retire early, and it was just morally repugnant. I can't think of anything more morally repugnant than finding a way around the will of the city council.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President.
Counselor Morbido.
I guess my question is, I absolutely agree that the mayor should respond to any communications that we feel, that we deem necessary. But at the same time, I took the email as if it was a communication responding to the budget, basically sending us an email saying, hey, I respect your decision. This is what I'm going to do anyways, and this is the reason. But I guess my guy, in the future, I guess my question is, what is deemed to be on public record to be before the council? Is every email to be discussed before the city council that we write? I'm just curious.
Through, through you.
Counselor Morbido, Counselor Zambudo?
Through you to the Counselor. I don't know about every, every email that I get from the mayor, but when I get an email from the mayor telling me he's going to circumvent the will of the council because he found money somewhere, I take, I take exception to that. And it's not the way business is done in city government. I've been around a little while, and never have I seen a mayor try to go around the city council like this since I've been on this council 21 years. And so that's, that's how I took this. But I don't care if, I would say, any email to the city council from the mayor should be public record, should be. I'd gladly put all that out on, on, on the calendar, or whatever way we can communicate it to, to the constituents, because I want them to know what's going on here. And right now, I'm very uncomfortable with what's going on here. It's not proper, and I want to get it back. I'd like to get it back on track. I'd like to get this back, this train back on the, on the train track. Thank you.
Point made. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, to what Counselor Zambudo was saying, this is actually kind of why I really wanted to get the memo on the record, because I wanted the residents to see, you know, if the mayor found a loophole, and he was legally able to do that, and it all checks out, we can have a debate over procedure. But I just want the residents of Riviera to know that it was not the city council that ended up going back and granting these pay raises. So I just want it clear that it's not the council. It does go back to the mayor. So that's why, for transparency reasons, I asked it to be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sorino. Counselor Rotondo?
Thank you. You know, I'm not looking at this beyond the issue of transparency. I mean, listen, when you have someone that works for the city that is laid off, terminated because of a lack of funding, and then we're giving out a pay raise, and then we cut that pay raise during the budgetary process because, not only of the appearance, but because of the issue that we've laid people off, then it gives credence to show the public, yes, this is why this was done. This is the purpose of transparency. And I think that's a fair and equal medium to go about. I don't see any need to go to every single email that the mayor sends us. I agree with you, Counselor Morbido. However, in this particular instances, instance, or other instances of similar magnitude, it might warrant that. So I agree with you, Counselor Sorino. If, if we could ask the Madam Clerk to put that on the website and let it be known accordingly, that would be great if it's not there presently. Thank you.
And just, just the edification, you know, I, there's a resident that wishes to speak, and we're going to have the back and forth on this. I don't think that anyone here, certainly when the mayor communicates to us in a, in a group, whether it's through a memo or in person, not every conversation is up for public debate. It's sometimes just rational communication, and that's the way it should be. Obviously, this one struck a chord, right? Through Counselor Zambudo and a few others. And I think that we have that right to say, you know what, we'd like this to be discussion via the city council. And that's exactly what we're doing tonight, you know. But, you know, certainly when he communicates to us on a, on a weekly or daily cadence, it's not going to be warranted to be made city council agenda business. But if we, if the will of the council is to have it on this one, I agree with the will of the council. And that's what we're here to do. We're here to support the whole council. Originally, I read it and said, thanks for the communication. Do I agree with it? Do I disagree with it? Maybe, maybe not. But we wanted to bring it up. So we were going to do this, that. I do have some questions to, if Mr. Visque, I believe, is on. And I don't, I'm not necessarily sure if this is going to be a full debate tonight. Maybe we should have a further, a greater discussion in, in committee.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I, I'm actually looking for the, these motions to go into Ways and Means, and then we'll discuss it.
At the end of it all, that's a great point. I think that this will, we should be referred to committee. So I guess I'll just ask Mr. Visque, if we can, yourself and potentially the mayor would be willing to participate in committee, so we can discuss this further, that'd be excellent. And I wanted to give a chance for a resident to speak that has their hand raised and has been patient. So, and then Counselor Sorino, we'll go back to you. Mr. Rose?
Yes. Wayne, Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street, Riviera, Mass. I have a question. My question is, could we get the city attorney to be present at this meeting, to discuss how the mayor is doing this? And if, and if he does do it, is, is there a way to stop it?
Thank you for your question. So I'll, Counselor Sorino, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just one question for you to the clerk. Madam Clerk, would you, I'm sure you have the memo in front of you. Would you be able to read it into the record? Because I have some residents who have been texting and would kind of like to know exactly what it, what it says that we're discussing.
It's up to the will of the council for the letter to be read into the record, then I will read it into the record.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Let me just queue it up. On June 29, the city council approved a municipal budget of 223,200, I'm sorry, 223,243,774. To arrive at this figure, the council voted to cut $127,296 from the budget that I submitted by reducing or rejecting proposed salary adjustments for seven specified positions in the municipal payroll. Although I have legitimate doubts about the city, about the council's legislative authority to intrude upon the executive function to set individual salaries, I respect the council's overall objective to approve a budget that imposes the least financial burden on the taxpayer. Consequently, despite my reservations, I do not challenge the council's ultimate decision. The council's action, however, does not diminish the importance of the positions I sought to fund. The reorganization of our administrative framework is critical to facilitate outstanding and efficient service to our residents. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues to impose extraordinary demands on our workforce and underscore the need for skilled and dedicated staff, I have explored alternative means of funding the payroll adjustments without affecting the 2021 fiscal year budget. I have determined that we are able to restore the unfunded portions of salaries with a combination of federal, state, and local dollars without impacting the city's bottom line. I am also writing to inform you that I have designated $1 million in CARE Act funds for a local rental assistance. Further, CARES Act money is the source of funding for public safety at testing sites, as well as the city's newly implemented ambassador program to promote compliance with COVID-19 precautionary requirements, a business ability program to help small businesses in our community, a community grant program to provide nonprofits with resources to respond to COVID-19, and additional inspectors and ISD to make sure regulations are being adhered to. Indeed, as the federal and government further clarifies the guidelines for future expenditure of CARES Act and other funds, I am hopeful that I will turn to this body to inform you that we can utilize additional dollars to meet other of the city's budgetary needs. While the economic pitfalls created by COVID-19 have impeded the regular flow of revenue to fund city government, careful management of our municipal finances, along with the assistance of state and federal funds, can assure that we meet our civic objectives and responsibilities in a manner that provides most value and service to our residents. We were gratified to learn that general local aid revenue from the Commonwealth this fiscal year will exceed our conservative budgetary expectations. As the economy recovers, we can anticipate that the city of Riviera's financial footing will remain on sound and solid ground.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Counselor Visconti, or Counselor Powers, Counselor Visconti? And then we're going to put this into committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the chairman of Ways and Means, when this budget was approved by the city council, it is my opinion that we had every right to make the net cuts that we made. I didn't agree with some of them. However, that's the way the budget was approved. You know, in the, I think it's important, too, where we're dealing with a $200 million plus budget, the city council, as they do in the city of Boston, they have a budget in April, which they submit to the city council. They meet with city councils to discuss and get an idea and understanding of what the city council is looking to do. So I think in the future, it would be wise for the mayor and the city council to meet sometime, maybe in March or April, get an idea of what was going to be available in the forms of revenue, get an idea of what the mayor or the city council may want to see. And then make that a, an outline, and then go back and forth a little, as I'm sure we would want to do, and then have the mayor finally submit a budget with the, with the understanding of what the mayor, what the city council is looking to do and approve. So I think that's something we should be looking to in the next fiscal year. And with that said, I'll move on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, and Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I know the memo stated that he received some, a combination of federal, state, and local dollars to be able to fund this account. Is that something that we can get some information on? I'd like some information on those funds, how much it was, where it's being distributed, so forth and so on, so we can get some knowledge on what's going on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Zambudo, and I think all these questions, we should, we should hope to have, prepare you, Mr. Visque, to have some answers for. I do have one question as well, but I'll let Counselor Zambudo go, and then we'll finish this up.
I'm going to make this quick, because we're going to discuss all this in, in whatever committees this is in, Ways and Means, and Legislative Affairs, or wherever you want to put it. Ways and Means would be appropriate. However, one of the themes of this memo was that he didn't agree with the authority of the city council to make the cuts. I thought I made that case pretty clear during the budget, that we do have the authority, not only by precedent, but by law. And so I don't want to hear that. But the other part of it is, this was not about money.
But the other part of it is, this was not about money. This was about the appropriate time to give pay increases during a pandemic when you laid people off. That was the case I made back then. I make that case. It doesn't make it okay now to do it with a backdoor appropriation. I don't care where it comes from, this is repugnant. This is Banana Republic-type stuff, and I'm not going to tolerate it.
Thank you, Councilor. And I know Mr. Vizcay is on, so I'll just ask, in wrapping it up, you know, I'll ask these questions, but if there was funding for a position, you don't have to answer this now, Mr. Vizcay, if there was funding for a position, let's just say round numbers, $5,000, you know, how does that go into the following year? So, if you can just help with those questions for Ways and Means and think about that, we'd really appreciate it. So, everyone in favor of, all in favor of putting this into Ways and Means?
All in favor.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the DPW to repair to the best of their ability the public stairs at Winthrop Avenue and Brad Street Avenue before the winter months. The top portions of the stairs are missing, making it dangerous for pedestrians using them.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I've asked a number of times if these stairs could just get patched. I know it's, you know, they need extensive work, but the tops of a lot of these stairs are missing, and there's rods that are visible, and anybody coming down the stairs, especially when it snows out, is going to get very, they're going to get hurt. So, I'm just asking if the DPW can just put a coat on the top of them and hold them until the end of maybe spring. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Great motion. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by councilors Morabito and Serino that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to the Bicella family. The Bicella family participates in park builds, city cleanups, but more importantly, organize their own family cleanups throughout North River. Their actions of going an extra mile for the community is not overlooked by this honorable body, therefore warrants the certificate of acknowledgement and appreciation for your contribution to help enhance our community as a status.
Councilor Morabito, then Councilor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I'll save my comments for the night of issuance. The Bicella family exemplify model citizens who are vested in the community. And not only do they park build, volunteer with the park builds throughout our city, and are engaged with city events, they also organize their own family cleanups along the walking trails in North River and along the neighborhoods. So, that warrants recognition, because I think more citizens should take that extra step and help clean the city, and it enhances the beauty. So, I'm going to pass it along to my colleague, Councilor Serino.
Councilor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will save most of my comments for that night, but Vanessa and Mike and the boys are a tremendous asset to our community and to North River specifically, especially with their cleanups along the trail, the rail trail up there. As the ward counselor, Vanessa calls me almost every week with, you know, something she's discovered or something that needs fixing or tending to, and she really has a pulse on her neighborhood in North River. And like I said, the whole family, just a great family who does a lot for our city. So, I'm glad that we'll be able to recognize them, and I'll speak a little bit more the night that we present it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? I know there's a resident wishing to speak. Mr. Lampadecchio?
Good evening. Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just want to commend the council. This is a great motion for a great family. The Bicella family contributes so much to our community, and it's going to be awesome to see them get this well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
Great point. And if I could also add, the Councilor Serino, you're lucky to have constituents like the Bicella family in your ward, and the city of Revere is better because of families like this, but we look forward to seeing them soon. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councilor Gino that the following special legislation be forwarded to the state delegation for approval. An act establishing residency requirements for the offices of mayor, city council, and school committee in the city of Revere. Section 1, no person shall be eligible for election to the office of mayor, councillor at large, or school committee unless at the time of such election, he or she has been a resident of the city for at least one year preceding. Section 2, no person shall be eligible for election to the office of ward councillor unless at the time of such election, he or she has been a resident of the ward being sought for election for at least one year preceding. Section 3, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Thank you, Councilor Gino.
Sorry. It's noted, Councilor Serino is recused from discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll throw you to the council. Some of you may wonder where this came from. As you know, I recently ran in a state election, and this is a requirement when you run for state rep. It's a requirement when you run for senate or any other state candidacy. It's also a requirement in some of our surrounding towns, which I can discuss more in committee. I'm hoping that it will go to Legislative Affairs. But basically, what it does is it protects our community, and it makes sure that people with a real vested interest in each part of the community are in it for the right reasons. So, I think it's really important, and again, it's nothing out of the ordinary. When I had to run for state rep, I had to live in the district for a year, and I think that that should be the case for any elected office. I mean, it's a no-brainer for the mayor and the at-large and the school committee, because you have the entire city of Revere, you just have to live in the city for one year. And for the wards, you have to live in the ward for a year. And I think that that's a reasonable request, and I look forward to discussing it more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend my colleague. I think this is a great motion. I'm shocked that it's not already the law. It's just, it's absurd to think that someone can come and jump in and say, I'm a candidate, when they came from California yesterday, and they want to run, you know, in time to put their papers in. So, it's a no-brainer, but I'm happy she put it in. So, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. One thing I do want to have mentioned by the city solicitor, as there are some concerns, is, for example, obviously, we have the census coming up, we changed district lines and so forth. I would hate to see, you know, let's say, for example, we have someone in, I don't know, Ward 4, I'm sorry for picking our ward, but they're in Ward 4 today, and then we changed the ruling, and now they're no longer a resident of that ward because we just changed the district lines. That's kind of unfair to them, and kind of puts them out of the process. I would suggest in committee to think about the machination of actually being a resident of the city of Revere for at least one year, and then inclusive of what other process thereof, and more importantly, to see what the city solicitor says. But I support this effort. I will work with you all in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Guanasso, then we have a few residents that wish to speak.
I certainly believe in the process of election, but I think this is a great motion. I think it's worthy of consideration. And I think that after reading the Boston Globe, which is the most liberal paper in the whole world today, where the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has decided that even ballots previously voted upon by members who have passed since are going to be counted. Now, forever and a day, I've been a long-term council. You all know that. You heard that, right? Over the many campaigns and many campaigns previously before I was elected, the all common denominator was, the old joke in history was, you know, look up and vote for someone who's deceased. They get the, in Election Day, they get the paper, oh, this person's deceased, let's go vote for them. Now, in the wisdom of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we're going to glorify that by adopting that, and we're going to putting ourselves in a position for major, major fraud. And I'm not Donald Trump. I'm telling you, from a trooper working in the ranks of political people and working many, many campaigns that I have worked, this is the most flagrant usage of fraud in the history of voting. Now, there's no better way in the world but to vote, but we have a bunch of people that are watering down the system so much that it's like, why don't we vote five years ahead of time? It means you can't dedicate a small, a week ahead, a week. Why do we have to go for months and allow this type of, for everybody to be convenient for them to vote? I understand we're under a pandemic right now. But these conditions that we're setting today will hold with us forever. And if we allow people to vote, and they pass, and then we are allowed to cast that vote, and that counts, we're opening ourselves for greater fraud. And I think that this is great. I think you ought to have a vested right in your community before you have a voting right and a panel that only serves 11 people. You shouldn't, you should have at least an awareness of what's going on in a community before you decide to come in and be an elected person. And let's face it, you could get any organization, group, maybe 20, 30 people, they can elect anybody. Their concerted effort could make anybody a candidate and make that person win, and allow that person to win. So, we're opening ourselves to water down society in the most sacred thing that we have in our country, the right to vote, and we're watering it down. So, it's really like, what's next? I look at the newspapers to say, what's next? What are we coming to next? So, I think this is a great motion, Councilor Gino, and I'm looking forward to this being voted upon, and I hope that we vote this evening, and I hope that the legislature takes it under consideration and votes it out immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We have attendees, Mr. Gravellisi wishing to speak.
Hi, Councilor, thank you. Can you hear me?
Name and address for the record.
Joe Gravellisi, 43 Randall Road. Appreciate you calling on me, and I want to thank Councilor Rotundo, because he mentioned one of the things that I was going to mention, one of my concerns. So, I do think that this is a solution in search of a problem. You know, I'm not aware of us ever having had an issue in the city of someone, you know, misrepresenting their address, or misrepresenting their residency, or moving and then a month later running. But that being said, you know, the counselor is correct that the standard for state rep and similar seats is that you live in that district for a year. So, as far as sort of citywide, I get it, but I do want to bring up some unintended consequences that could come of this, or maybe they're intended consequences, I don't know. You know, I'm thinking of, obviously, the redistricting of wards, that could be a problem. I'm also thinking of, you know, does it really make sense if someone is a 40-year resident of Revere, and they've lived in Ward 3 their whole life, and then they decide that, you know, their kids have moved out, so they're going to downsize and go live in a condo in Beach Mine, that they don't have the right to run for ward counselor, even though they've been a resident of the city their whole life? That doesn't make any sense. I'm also concerned about something like, you know, a college student, you know, they lived in Revere their whole life, went to Revere High School, maybe they went to college and grad school out of state, came back in the summer and decided they wanted to get involved for office and run for office. They don't have the right to run for office because they quote-unquote "just moved here." So, I just think that the voters are smart enough to elect who does and does not have a vested interest in the community. So, I don't necessarily have a problem with setting this requirement for citywide offices because there are precedents for it, but doing it based on ward makes no sense. You know, ward is just a distinction that we come up with for representation. Our city services aren't broken down by ward, our schools aren't broken down by ward. So, that really just makes no sense to me. So, I just wanted to put my opposition to that on the record.
Thank you for your point. I'm just going to couple more residents, and then we'll...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lampadecchio, and then we have one more.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I love this motion. I like where it's going. I like that you have to be a resident of Revere to run in Revere, and you should be for at least a year preceding, but I would also disagree on the fact of the ward piece, especially with lines about to be redrawn. I think that would disparately impact some potential candidates for next year's election. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lampadecchio. And Mr. Rose. Let me try that again. Mr. Rose?
I'm sorry. I was talking, but I didn't unmute myself. Wayne Rose, 19 Thondike Street. I think this is a great motion, although I have a problem with the ward part of it. Also, you could be a resident for 10 or 15 years, but sometimes circumstances are out of your control, and you have to move, and that would disqualify you. I just think the ward piece needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you for your point. And we have a few councilors, Councilor Rotundo, then Councilor Powers.
Well, I hate to break the news to Councilor, excuse me, to former candidate Gravellisi, but there have been instances when actually people did not live in the city and actually were running for office here. And in fact, at one time, some people have lived in basement apartments and have done that while they were living in Boston. I would also say that at one point or another, there were several councilors that lived in the hunt. And so, this is something that is vitally needed, and I totally agree with this process. And, you know, the funny thing about scrutinizing people's right to run for office, or for that matter, their voting right in the city, is that when you challenge it, which I've done successfully twice, you get to prove where someone lives, where they work, and where they don't live, and where they don't work. And at the end of the day, I'm always up for that challenge. So, I look forward to this process. I know it's going to be fair. I know it's going to be equitable, and I know it's not going to be politics as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Councilor Gino for putting this motion before us. I think that when you represent an area or want to represent an area, you should have some knowledge and some concern for that area. I've been a Ward 5 councillor for some time now, and I would have no intention whatsoever of moving to another ward in the city to run for office. Council at large, that's a different story. I think a ward councillor could run for council at large. It's happened many times in the past, and many times in the past, they have in fact been successful. So, I think requiring someone to live in a ward for one year? What's wrong with that? What's wrong with that? Don't you want to elect a person that knows the area they're representing, that has a concern for that area? And there may be other people that live in the ward that have the same concerns and the same knowledge of the area, and they certainly should have the right to run. But I don't think from a person, for a person, a candidate to jump from area to area, six months, nine months, or something like that, I don't think that's right. So, I want to commend Councilor Gino again for putting this motion before us, and I'm sure there'll be, you know, we'll tweak this out, and something good will come from it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gino.
Thank you. Just a quick closing remark. I don't think this was ever meant to be, you know, ill-intended in terms of redistricting or anything like that. I think there are certainly ways that you could, you know, put this forward to say, you know, if you were, you know, a resident of Ward 6, if you were a resident of Ward 6 as of that date, you know, and when it was Ward 6, or whatever it should be, you know, there are ways to make sure that those types of circumstances are accounted for. But I think that there's a bigger picture here, and I think that, you know, it's no different than if we're redistricted and I lived in Ward 1, and then could potentially end up in Speaker DeLeo's district, right? So, as someone that was running for state office, you know, I wouldn't be able to run. So, I think it just makes sense. You know, you should have to live there for a year, you should have to be a part of that district, and it's no different than any other seat in the Commonwealth. So, if you're invested in the community, you can make an investment to live where you want to represent for a year. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. All in favor of sending this to Legislative Affairs? So ordered.
I was on mute. Sorry. There is a late motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the mayor look into the feasibility of donating $25,000 to the First Congregational Church. of donating $25,000 to the First Congregational Church Care of Caring Heart Ministry. Purpose of this funding is to provide food, shelter, and clothing to the homeless of River. The Caring Hearts Ministry provides to all people from all walks of life.
Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to reiterate something that was spoken about earlier, in the fact of the mayor's ability to communicate with the council and the issue of transparency. I had submitted this late motion and had asked to speak with the mayor, and we had a, you know, fairly long conversation and discussion, and to his credit, he is looking forward to starting a working group and hopefully look forward to getting nonprofits and other groups into the process of hopefully getting a shelter in the city of River, which we desperately need. Caring Hearts Ministry is a group of people run by Carol DeSantis and Joe DeSantis and helped by many people within the city of River that help the homeless that congregate on the beach throughout the city. They lack clothing, they lack shelter, they lack food, and, you know, this very caring group doing God's work on a daily basis. And, you know, I can mention many names of people that are out there every day actually just giving themselves to help the poor and the needy. I will say that Kim Hanton has said to me that there is a grant process that is going forward, and hopefully, caring ministries will apply for that. I would like to put this motion in committee in hopes that we can help facilitate them obtaining that grant money. I have spoken to Pastor, excuse me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, Pastor Bogerton, Bogerman, but this is, you know, very, very important in my mind for our community and, quite frankly, for the people that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. At your request, Councilor Rotundo, we'll put this in Ways and Means Subcommittee. All in favor? So order. And there's one more communication.
One last late communication. This is from the city auditor relative to the River TV appropriation.
Hello again. Thank you. Sorry for the late communication, but as you know, we had passed a law at the end of fiscal year '20 about having to appropriate dollars to operate the River TV from a receipts reserve for appropriation fund. Those dollars now have to be placed in that fund and appropriated by this body for the operation of that television station. So if you have any questions, let me know, but otherwise, this is kind of a matter of routine at this point.
It's just a housekeeping matter. Let's vote on it.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clark, would you call a roll?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $175,506.21 from the cable TV reserve account to River TV? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
He said yes.
Oh, sorry. Councilor Guanasso said yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky? Voting yes with the thumbs up. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Viscotti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Thank you, Madam.
No further business, Council President.
There is just a few points of personal privilege. Councilor Morbido and Councilor Janino wish to speak. Councilor Janino. Ladies first.
Mine will be very brief. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first start on a happy note and then a sad note. So on a happy note, I want to wish my colleague, Councilor McKenna, a very happy birthday. She's celebrating her birthday in the council chambers tonight.
Happy birthday.
30?
We love our Ward 1 councillor.
39 years old.
Happy birthday, McKenna.
Thank you.
And second, quick one. Madam Clerk will also be celebrating her birthday before the next meeting, so I want to wish her a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ashley.
Thank you, councilors.
Two women that run the council that we couldn't be without, so thank you, and happy birthday to both of you.
30, 30 great.
On a unhappy and on a very sad note, I offer our condolences on behalf of the city council to the chair of the Conservation Commission, Nick Malason, on the passing of his brother. So I ask that we have a moment of silence in memory of Ralph, and again, offer Nick our deepest condolences and on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilor Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the month of October marks Anti-Bullying Awareness Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I hope for a day where bullying is stopped and cancer is crushed, so let's do whatever we can this month to support anti-bullying awareness and breast cancer awareness. As I know some of my colleagues are wearing a pink tie. On another note, I know most of our viewers tuned out because the Pats are playing, so good luck, Pats.
Let's go. I'm not sure about that tonight. Motion to adjourn, and the next scheduled meeting will be October 26th. Hope to see you then. Thank you very much.